Ladies and gentlemen, it is two o'clock and we are here for, I'm going to call the meeting to order, for the spec, uh, the emergency meeting of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners. So at this time, Mr. J. Aldine, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Aldine. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Bob Lucy Chair.
Here.
Marsha Burke Bigler Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung. Von Hartung.
Here.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
John Slaughter County Manager.
Present.
Paul Leparelli Assistant District Attorney.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galacini Chief Deputy Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, our next item is item three, public comment. Comment under this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual lax items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment at this time?
There is no public comment.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll close agenda item three and on to, uh, Mr. Manager, on to agenda item four, please.
Mr. Chair, before I do that, I would ask legal counsel to give us just a brief overview of the nature of an emergency meeting and how this came to pass, how this came to be.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the county manager's office has been working on the issue of the pending storms and potential emergencies and consulting with various experts. They consulted with our office about the calling of a, of an emergency meeting. The open meeting law contemplates there will be times when three days' notice can't be given prior to a meeting. And in the event of a, of an emergency like this, you do your best to get notice out for the meeting. So the manager's office has coordinated the press releases, media contacts, sent the agenda to all the usual places, posted it in all the usual places. I sent an advisory to the Attorney General's Office that, that we were having a meeting and heard back that they were expecting those kinds of things to happen. Whatever actions are taken here today won't be taken pursuant to an agenda with three days' notice. So it will be our advice that ratification of whatever actions are taken today be accomplished at a later meeting through, through a published agenda. We do have an agenda for the meeting and it is important to stick to the items that are on the agenda that are related to the emergency. It's not the time to talk about things unrelated to the emergency. So, uh, item, item four on the agenda is a presentation. Item five is, is set for the board to take action if it desires to. And, um, I'll be available for questions during the discussion if, as always, if you have worries or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Leparelli. Appreciate that. Mr. Slaughter.
Mr. Chair, item four is a presentation on current and short-term weather conditions and associated, associated impacts on Washoe County. And we're going to begin with the briefing by the National Weather Service, I believe. We have a representative here. There he is. If you could come down and introduce yourself and walk us through the briefing.
Thank you. I'm John Middlestat with the National Weather Service with the Forecast Office here in Reno. First slide. We have a weather pattern that's a classic setup for flooding here in the Truckee Meadows area. And what this four panels are showing, the upper left, Saturday morning, it's showing wind and moisture approaching the coast and in fact, spreading into California by, by tomorrow morning. By afternoon, you can see it spread across the state of Nevada. So, uh, this pattern with the reds being the strongest transport of moisture sets, sets up that moisture to head right across the central Sierra into our area, similar to our historic floods. All of our model simulations are showing this, so our confidence is quite high with this evolution over the next couple of days. And Commissioners, please, if you have questions, please let me know as I, as I go through these slides. Did I do that? Okay, thank you. Ahead of the heavy rain, we will be cold enough through the morning hours tomorrow for snow, mainly snow here in the Reno Sparks area. One or two inches of snow during the day tomorrow. This could create some impacts in terms of our roads that still have ice on them. So roads will continue to be an issue. You see on this graphic, it says freezing rain to the east. That's from this morning's forecast. It looks a little less likely that we'll have freezing rain here, but more in northern Washoe County would be an area where there'll still be pockets of freezing rain during the day tomorrow. Then as that warm air comes in off the Pacific Ocean tomorrow evening, there'll be a transition from snow to a sort of rain-snow mix. And then by tomorrow night, the heavy rain moves in. So again, as I mentioned, some travel disruptions during the day tomorrow. It just takes a little bit of freezing rain, so for those places north of us, definitely a danger for travel hazards there. Our confidence is high in this, but in exactly how much snow we'll get here versus rain, again, our best guess is an inch or two of snow tomorrow. Then we get into the event causing the flooding, which is this strong atmospheric river, which is a, a channel of moisture moving across the Pacific, again, coming right across the Sierra Mountains. Up to 12 inches or more of rain from this event at the crest of the Sierra. And as you can see from this map, our best estimate for the Reno area is two to three inches for the Reno Sparks area in the two to three inch range. With this rain, the highest flooding risk then will begin Sunday night into Monday. After that, we, a cold front comes through and snow levels come down again, and that'll reduce the flooding risk. So we're, have high confidence in flooding, especially on creeks near burn areas, such as the recent burn in the Washoe Valley. Low-lying areas, next to construction areas, all those kind of areas that are, are at risk for flooding. For those who remember the 2005 event, we're looking at similar levels for this event. Every event's different, so it won't be just like 2005, but similar levels. I'm, I'm told the next speaker will talk more specifically about what areas are at risk of being inundated. And again, uh, we're confident in seeing this rain, seeing the spike in rivers. Medium confidence on the severity. Could be higher, it could be lower. So here's the, what's called a hydrograph, which shows the level of the Truckee River at Reno with time. And so what we see here, I don't know if I can point, but is the sharp rise beginning early Sunday morning, rising up to just touching a major flood stage and then cresting, coming back down during the day Monday as those snow levels come down. This is our best guess of it. There's chance it could go higher. With this outlook, uh, with this forecast, sorry, and, and warning, there's a warning associated with this, we can see major flooding with serious damage from Mogul to Highway 395 especially, and then other low-lying areas, trailer parks with one to two feet at downtown Reno, including the Idolwild and Wingfield. One to two feet at those areas, and then Idolwild and Wingfield Parks are the lowest areas right along the river, up to six feet of water covering those areas, similar to what we saw in 2005. Any questions at this point before I move on? Here's the same kind of plot for the Truckee River at Vista. And it again rises, touching just, not, just off a major flood. Again, a lot of the flooding down, as you get down into the Sparks Industrial Area, is also from Steamboat Creek, which will also flood. And this means moderate to major flooding from Highway 395 out to Nixon. So that includes Sparks, Lockwood, Tracy, and Wadsworth. The airport is an area as Steamboat Creek starts to back up and the water starts to spread out. That's definitely an area to watch. We've been in touch with the airport, so we know they're aware of that. The messaging that my office has been putting out today to the public in, in Washoe County, this is not, I'll believe it when I see it forecast, all our models are pointing to this scenario. So our confidence is high. And some of the preparation items there, you can see on the right side. Finally, the advice that we've been giving from my office, now's the time to be working on preparations. We know there's a lot going on in terms of sandbagging, et cetera. Pay attention to construction areas. Use, again, the 2005 flood as a comparison. And then again, to repeat, that Saturday's weather, tomorrow's weather will be uncertain in terms of, we'll have snow and north of us some freezing rain tomorrow. Finally, I want to point out that there are more storms on the way next week. So while at this point, we're not certain on how much rain, there's still a lot of moisture coming across the Pacific Ocean with those storms. So any kind of flooding measures that get put in place for this first event, it'll be important to keep those up because there is potential for more heavy rain next week. Any questions?
Any Commissioners have any questions at this time? I have just one brief comment question. Annual report, the annual rain collection at the airport is around seven inches total annually, correct?
Correct.
And we're supposed to get three inches just over the weekend?
That's correct.
Is that what I, is that what I was understanding?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So the airport is forecast to get almost half of its annual amount from this event.
Just over the weekend. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Slaughter.
Mr. Chair, our next presentation will be on the anticipated, change that to potential, to anticipated impacts based on river flooding modeling. And J. Aldine is here, our flood authority, to walk us through that presentation.
Good afternoon, members of the commission.
Welcome, Mr. Aldine.
Hopefully, it will.
I think they're loading your.
Maybe they're loading now.
Right now.
As your manager said, I was asked to explain the, the, these series of maps. I think I want to back up one. Come on, will it back up? Ed, could you back that up? There we go. Okay, and then display that one. Very good. Aaron actually asked me to come and, and explain this to the commission. It is a map of our simulation of the 2005, 2006 event. We call it 2005 and '06 because it started in December and then it went through January. This shows flooding in three categories. We simplified this for use by the media. It could actually be a little bit more complex, a little bit more detailed. Yellow is flooding to one feet, I believe. And, and orange is flooding to two feet, and red is flooding over two feet. The thing that's important to note is where you see red, there's a lot of extra deep flooding, especially in the island. If you see the island there that's right at the UNR farms, you, that's the, I call that affectionately the island where sheep go to die because that's, that's what happened in, in 1997. But just off of that island, the, the flood is about nine feet deep. Anyhow, this is a simulation of the 2000, 2005, 2006 event. Since this has been done, the weather service has revised the flow rate up a little bit. We have not been able to capture that new model yet. We're working on it. These models actually take eight to 10 hours to run. And so we're experimenting with ways to clip out portions of it and run just what we need in a couple of hours. And, and we'll see how lucky we are being able to do that. But for now, this is the information that is put in the hands of your emergency management people. And they are the ones that are using it for road closures, evacuation, things of that nature. You'll notice the airport has some flooding that's indicated, a lot of yellow, a little bit of red. That is primarily from Boynton Slough. The flood project will not affect that or influence that, with the exception that if we lower the overall flood by building the flood project, then that will have a tendency to drain a little bit faster and maybe not accumulate as high as it is. You'll notice that the upper part of the airport is all free and clear. Even, uh, planes probably could land if they, they had to. You'll notice that there is no water coming in between the airport and the river from the side. That would be water that comes from the next slide, which is the downtown section. Uh-oh. There we go. I'm being cut off from the, I'll put it up here. So the downtown section normally, as you can see where the, the yellow, which is actually shallow flooding, that is down along Riverside Drive, it starts about just, just beyond Booth Street. Keystone goes down to the Lear Theater, up and around to First Street, down First Street to Lake Street, and then back in the, the river at About Lake or a little bit downstream of Lake Street. This was done at 13,400 CFS. The weather service has revised the, the Reno estimate to be now 15,400. So we're now talking about a 2,000 CFS greater peak than is demonstrated in this map, which means that those yellows will go orange, but probably not red at this time. Again, and we're, we're working, we, we were up all night, literally 12, 1:00, and 3:00 rerunning models, so trying to be able to get this information for the community. So are there any questions on the elevation maps? Just so that you understand, this is where the flooding is expected. I'll move, I'll move my next slide, guys. There we go. The next slide is a, no, no, the, the other way, the other left. We, well, we have it. Your, your GIS department did it. The county manager asked that we do a map that showed as much to the extent as possible the flooding that occurs from Verdai, there you go, from Verdai to about where our flood project begins at about Booth Street. And so what we did is we overlaid the existing FEMA floodplain on the river in those, in that reach. And we have listed points of hydraulic interest on there and that is available for the emergency management personnel to have, to look. I know that the manager was concerned about the homeless and wanting to make sure that they're treated humanely and that we find places for them. And there's a lot of effort that needs to go forth in that respect. But again, this map was created for that purpose. So if there are any questions, that is my presentation.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Aldine.
All right. Mr. Manager, I don't know yet. There. Do we have any other presentations at this time?
We do not.
We do not have any presentations. I am so weak. I think we're ready to, with the board's ready, we're ready to go to item five?
Yep, item five, please.
Item five, which is discussion, possible direct, possible declaration of state of emergency due to the anticipated effects of the series of high precipitation, high precipitation storms predicted for northern Nevada, including possible flooding of the Truckee River and other natural and constructed drainage facilities. We do have a copy of the declaration. We'll get those to you. Sorry.
Mr. Manager, if you could as well, could you please outline the purpose of the declaration of emergency, state of emergency for the board and the intent?
Certainly. And as, as the, um, the copy of that declaration is coming to you, you'll see some of the, some of that discussion. Just in, in lay, lay terms, we know that our resources are going to be strained over the next several days. The city of Reno's resources, city of Sparks resources, the county, other jurisdictions are going to be restrained, strained. So the, the city of Reno, city of Sparks have, have also made declarations of emergencies. We have copies of those that have been put on the record for today's meeting. We will deliver all of these to, to the governor's office. As an example, we are prepared and actually have, have, have begun, begun discussions with the state for state resources, such as the National Guard, such as Nevada Division of Forestry crews. Resources that are from outside of the area, that from the state. And with this declaration, and with the governor recognizing this, those assets can start moving towards Washoe County, towards Reno's, towards Sparks, and positioning those as early as tomorrow for use in, in, in our preparation for flood fighting. Additionally, there are some other items, such as if we need to make emergency purchases. The declaration of an emergency allows me then to approve those purchases outside of our normal purchasing processes, which could take more time than what we have available to us in this situation. Those are some examples.
Great. Thank you. One quick, quick thing I wanted to say is, is I also have had discussions with the governor this morning, this afternoon, after our briefing, and he conveyed to me that he will continue to do whatever the state can to make sure that we are properly prepared for the storm and any events that we see coming over the weekend and shared his support and anything that they can do to, and through this declaration of emergency, that will allow him those abilities to, for the state to help us in those manners. And he urged whatever we need to do to get the, make sure that all the citizens and residents of the county are safe throughout this event and making sure that we mitigate any loss or damage to this event, that we do what we can and to properly prepare for that. So it was a good conversation. He was very supportive and, and looking to help in any way, shape, or form. So at this time, I'll bring it to the board for any questions. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manager, and perhaps Mr. Leparelli, just some clarification here. Are we actually declaring a state of emergency or are we giving you the ability, when necessary, to declare a state of emergency?
Mr. Chair, for Mr. Hartung, this is actually a case where we have a little bit of time ahead of time, a little bit of time, a little bit of notice. So in this particular case, the board is declaring the emergency. If the board were not able to meet in the ti, in a timely fashion, our code allows me to make that declaration. But since we had a little bit more time and we're able to, to get all five board members together, we were able to do this meeting so that the board is making the declaration.
Okay, so we'll actually make the declaration. We don't need to just turn power over to you and, and where you. you and, and where you make the declaration as you see fit. Mr. Borelli.
Mr. Chair, for Commissioner Hartung, as, as the manager said, this time around, unlike, say, the, the Washoe Valley fire, which broke out at night when people were asleep and on a, you know, on a Friday or whatever it is, this time, there's a little bit of foreseeability. And so, the code, the county code, which follows some state law authority, says, the board declares the emergency unless it's not practical to get the board together and then the manager does it. So in this instance, it was possible to get the board together. This is a better, more public and, and transparent way of, of, of declaring emergencies than, than we sometimes are able to use. And so, the, the declaration of emergency that's in front of the board today would actually declare the emergency now, and, and that declaration would last until the need for it has expired and then it will be terminated. And as the manager said, it, it authorizes the use of extraordinary powers for, for requisitioning of equipment and materials, putting the, the Emergency Operations Center into activation, which triggers a whole bunch of costs, authorizes overtime, authorizes, you know, the use of county equipment on private property if necessary, all sorts of things that we don't normally do, and all in the, all in the vein of trying to prevent the loss of life and, and property.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Any further comments or questions at this time? Commissioner Herman?
Okay. Is there any downside to doing this, this early?
So we did, we, we had a lot of discussion about timing of the, of the emergency declaration, and the, the, the reason why we wanted to do it today is, is part of the, part of the discussion was if, if we, and we know we need some resources from the state, to mobilize those resources might, may take eight to, eight to 12 hours. We need those resources here tomorrow. And so, in discussions with the, with the, with the governor's office, with the state Division for Emergency Management, it was kind of a mutual decision that the sooner that Reno, Sparks, and ultimately Washoe County makes the emergency declaration, the sooner we can get those resources start moving our way.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion at this time? Seeing none.
(inaudible).
Yeah. All right, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Commissioner Hartung.
I move that we declare Washoe County in a state of emergency and that we turn powers over to the manager to mobilize resources as necessary.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hartung, seconded by Commissioner Jung. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I, I was glancing at my notes and I wasn't paying careful attention, but did the motion adopt the written declaration that was presented to the board?
And, and the motion to include the adoption of the written declaration, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I have a motion to secondary agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Need to call public comment.
Yeah, we'll call for public comment, is there any public comment?
For the record, there's no public comment.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All right, do we need to take another vote on that, for that addition, Mr. Borelli?
I, I think it's clear on the record.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, thank you very much, we've, we've got that, we'll get that into effect immediately. On to Agenda Item Six, Mr. Manager.
Item Six is our final public comment for our meeting.
Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
No, sir, there is not.
All right. Seeing there are no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board and adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, good job.